All right, we're on, so I'm gonna open this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board for Monday, April 22nd, '29, and also wish everybody a happy Earth Day. I'd like to, because it is Earth Day.
Earth Day.
So I've been informed. I'd like to start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is our manifests.
Ah. I will make a motion that we approve the Council Payable manifest of 4/23/19.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Oh, can you just take some cursory notes, since we don't have a note taken tonight?
With the emphasis on curs-
Huh?
With the emphasis on cursory.
Yeah. Just so we have something to post publicly.
It's gonna be a short story tonight. Not a novel.
One of those was a payroll manifest.
Oh, I didn't have it on the-
Council Payable, Council Payable, that one's payroll.
Do you want me to do it separately?
Yeah, might as well.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we also approve the payroll manifest for April 23, 2019.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Oops, sorry.
All in favor. Of course I had it.
Sorry about that. My apologies.
The motion is seconded. All in favor? Unanimous.
Very good.
Apologies.
It's okay. My hand went up as soon as you said that.
I got it.
That's a Pavlovian response. There's that. We each got one of those. All right, next item on the agenda is minutes, but I think I wanna hold off, just in case Ben or Tyler have any edits or comments they wanna make. Does that sound all right?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah?
Yep.
All right. Action items from last meeting. Did we have anything marked as a follow-up item? I don't see anything in the-
I don't see any action items. They should be in the minutes, right?
Right, right. I didn't see any.
No.
Okay. All right, reports from assigned boards and committees. Assessing. Haven't met since last time, right?
No.
Right. We won't meet for another two weeks or so.
Yeah, it's like May, I think.
Yeah.
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 John, what can you say?
We won't have another assessing, Board of Assessors meeting until May.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I mean, as a, just an FYI, what we decided is, is it once a month, or-
Once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah.
And it's gonna be the Tuesday after-
The selectmen's meeting.
The selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
So, whatever date that falls on. Makes it easier. I plan my travel around select board meetings, so I'll be in town for those.
Yeah.
It's easy to be here for the Tuesday as well.
Okay. Planning? Who's on planning?
Tyler.
Tyler's on planning, okay. And budget, that's-
Not in session. Well, that's, Ben's on that, but obviously budget's not in session right now.
Yeah, it's not the season for that.
I can talk about Marston.
Yeah.
Okay, so Matt Kukouchis, and myself, and Chris, and Courtney got together to talk about next steps, post-town meeting. And a couple, couple things we talked about. The first is how we're going to manage the project from here on out. And we talked to Matt Kukouchis about that. Matt still wants to play an active role in the project, but might not, on his own, have the technical expertise for some of the work that is gonna be done. So Matt is going to partner with two other individuals in town who have the expertise, right? Our desire is to pick somebody from the select board, potentially Tyler, 'cause he's been involved in it, to kind of act as the board's representative throughout the process, because as work is being done, there's always, like with any project, there's decisions that have to be made.
Right.
Right? And so what we're proposing is that somebody from the select board, again, potentially Tyler, be the representative, that we empower him and Chris to make those decisions, as long as it's still within the scope-
Within scope, right.
-of what, you know, has been specified. And then the other part of it is the fundraising part of it, and there's a plan in place to try to reach out to some of the other groups in town to kind of sign up for different pieces of it, right? And, you know, driving different fundraising activities. And Courtney being involved in it is great for that, because she's got all the connections, she's got the energy to help do that. So she's gonna bring a lot to the project. At the same time, as we continue to build momentum, we'll be able to go after additional grants, and Joe Porter will continue to help with that. So what we'd like to do is, at the next meeting, bring in Matt and the other two individuals who'll kind of be the project managers, per se, and talk in detail about what that process will be, and whether or not what's being proposed is satisfactory to everybody on the board for moving forward. So that's kind of what came out of our initial discussion, and we'd like to bring them in. I think it's the sixth is the next meeting. We'd like to bring them in then, to kind of talk through the details of it.
Sounds good.
Yep. Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited that it looks like we can finally start getting some momentum there.
Yeah, yeah. And are the milestones gonna be, like, documented on paper, like, like a traditional project?
I mean, they certainly can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they certainly can be. I mean, they're going through the process right now of rebidding. We think we know who we have the best bid from, but we certainly wanna make sure, and so they're going through the process of rebidding. And so they should have that recommendation for us on the sixth as well.
Okay.
I mean, we're still looking at some time before they can actually play, because it takes time for grass and all of that stuff, so. But yeah, we can certainly talk about milestones with them when they come in.
Yeah, that way there's, you know, when, if we can announce milestones, you know, that we've achieved certain milestones to the public, people will-
Yep.
-have a tangible yardstick to know how the project is doing.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, too, is like the involvement of other groups in the community, like NYAA and soccer group and all of that stuff. So there's a lot of dialogue that's going on with them, too.
Yeah. Is it just athletic groups, or is it gonna be other civic groups, like the Women's Club or the Scouts?
Well, that's, that's a good question. We can discuss that with Courtney, but there's also, Courtney mentioned is a group, and it, name of it escapes me right now, but it's a group that is involved in, you know, helping to build and fund trails in different communities like this. So they are a group that potentially could come out and help with our own Trails Committee-
Right.
-getting trails built. And it's specifically for community projects like this. So she's, she's not looking just at the athletics, but the other opportunities-
Right.
-that can help with non-athletics as well.
Cool.
Yeah, she's great, I'm psyched she's part of it now. Yep. So if it's okay, you should schedule that with Chris for the-
Yeah.
-sixth.
Next, I didn't wanna write that down. Matt, right? Matt and Courtney. Four, five, six, two, discuss. Marston. Good, all right. Do you have any questions for Donna? No? No? Okay. What's left for boards and committees? Planning, zoning. We don't have anybody on zoning.
No. Planning, budget, Marston-
Budget, zoning, Marston.
Assessing.
Yeah, that covers it.
Yep. And Chris isn't here for a report.
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, can I talk a little bit about this ZBA? We had a problem last week and-
Well, it's, yeah, it's not on the agenda, and it's really not, this isn't really the purview for that.
Well, I'm sorry, 'cause it said BOS reports from assigned boards and committees, so I thought it would be-
That's just the select board representatives to the committees to report back to the board on the activity of the other boards, what's getting at the rest of this.
Who's on the ZBA?
We don't have a representative-
We don't have a rep on-
-on the select board on the ZBA. It's just planning, budget.
So there's no report from the ZBA to the selectmen? I was locked out of the ZBA meeting last week without any prior notification, so I think it's an important discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's not in scope for us. We don't have authority over the zoning board. They're a separately elected board, so we don't-
Do you know who has the power to lock out a ZBA member from a meeting?
I don't know. I don't know the details of it, so I'm kind of reluctant to weigh in on that at all.
I was hoping to nip it in the bud tonight, but-
It's not something we have authority over. The other, the charter and definition of the other committees call for having your representative of the select board, but zoning does not, so there isn't anything we could do or act on.
So if there's an issue, well, the town administrator was involved, too, and, you know, if there's an open meeting, possible violation, is that something the selectmen wanna know about and try to clarify, or? I mean, Chris Durndale was involved, so I have a thinking to address it. I think he's the one that locked the door.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll probably get a report from him about what happened and why, but he's, he's away this week, so, so he's not available to-
And I'd appreciate to be involved in that discussion, if I may, because, once again, there's more than two sides to the story, and I'd like to be very, have a chance to voice my view on the matter. I hope it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, yeah, again, I can't.
Well, my suggestion to the board was to ask the town attorney to clarify the proper procedure for executive sessions, so that it doesn't violate the open meeting law again, 'cause I did speak to an attorney, and last week did violate the open meeting law. So I think the town attorney should go over with the committee chairs the proper procedure for doing executive sessions.
Yeah. Well, I'll, we'll talk to Chris about it and see, get the details, but beyond that, we have no say in the matter, 'cause it's, we have no authority over that board, so. All right, so yeah, town administrator report, Chris is not here. We do have some mail. Actually, I'll give time to review this. We've got letters from Meals on Wheels. There's one for you. And you didn't get one, because they probably don't have your name yet, but you can look at mine. So I'll just read it briefly. You know, "Dear Selectmen, I'm writing to you on behalf of the 22 seniors we serve in Nottingham to invite you to participate in the 16th Annual March for Meals campaign. As a town official, you're in an excellent position to help Rockingham Nutrition Meals on, and Meals on Wheels raise awareness for the growing number of seniors facing hunger and isolation, both serious problems currently impacting our community and the nation at large." Further down, they ask, they say, "You are a recognizable and strong voice in your community, and we would be honored if you would participate in the March for Meals campaign by helping to prepare, serve, and/or deliver meals to our senior clients during April and May. In doing so, you can connect with the seniors we serve and help Rockingham Nutrition and Meals on Wheels gain much-needed visibility for this important cause." So we've been invited to participate in the Meals on Wheels program here in town, so if you have the ability to participate, I would say, please do. In fact, I'm going to, not only am I gonna see what I can do to participate in that, but my boys as well, 'cause I think that would be a good experience for them as well.
Yep, that's fantastic.
Do they tell you, like, when they do it, or is there certain times?
Um, it did say April and May, so there's several-
Well, we got the ones, but I didn't know if that was like, you know, or participate, if they did it like evenings, or if it was just lunch every day, or if it was, you know, to see when other people could help out.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm gonna get in touch with them and ask that very question, so I can share it. I'll share it with you.
That'd be awesome.
Different times that I might be able to help, too, so.
Right, right. And my schedule can be erratic, but if I can fit in a couple of-
Absolutely.
-blocks of time to help out, then-
That's a great program, too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we have some other documents to sign in the folder. Some of those are, bill and sign correspondent. Oh, those are mostly appointments. That's for later.
So that, yeah, I mean, these are-
This is 7B.
This is all personnel-related.
Okay. Is that for non-public?
No, I, I mean, unless somebody has questions about it. Three. I don't think there are that, any questions about it. This one we have to discuss separately.
Yeah, yeah. But these, these are routine, right?
Those are the ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so we can take care of those now?
Those are the ones that we got via email.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
All right. All right, there's a sticker here somewhere. Oh, there it is.
Where'd you just put it? Here?
It's on the back.
Okay.
Yeah. Great. Miss that one? It's on the back side of the front page. Are there two stuck together, or is that just one?
Nope. This one.
Okay. So basically, what we do here, when we're, it's the annual, and basically, we just review it and initial it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. This was for the stuff that I've never seen, the-
Yes.
Yep.
There's another one. That's an appointment. This is an appointment.
This was here, too. There's no, that's just a, seems like a notification, to mean that there will be something to forthcoming.
Right, I mean, we usually see something like this, a formal letter, so should we, should I just save that for Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, should we put these off until our-
What are they?
Appointments that we have to sign.
I mean, we can probably sign it.
Yeah.
Unless anybody has a-
I know this one's been renewed many times over. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with signing them if you're okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Oh, wait, I've already signed, we've already signed it.
Or is that last year's? Oh, no.
No. What's here? I guess that's the different part of it. Warden, fire warden.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that part of it needs to be signed.
So are you only signing or are you saying for-
What's that?
You're signing some, you're appointing someone?
We have a number of appointments to sign off on.
So this is for Deputy Warden.
Deputy Fire Warden.
Yeah, Deputy Fire Warden, so Brett LeBlanc. Yep.
Who is that?
Brett LeBlanc. Okay, there's that. Yeah, this one only needs three, so this is okay.
Yep. This one, this is, this one is to renew Gary Anderson's membership or appointment as our representative to Stratford Regional Planning Commission. There. Where's this? And we finished those, and this is a separate item. So actually, we got appointments out of the way. And there's that, that goes in there, too.
Okay.
And that's good.
It's gonna be the fastest meeting on record.
Yeah. All right, on to general business. The first item on this list is board priorities for 2019. Did we have a running list already?
Uh, we don't, I mean, Chris sent us an email that kind of outlined some of the things, particularly the things that came out of town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, like, last year, I know, working on, supporting the updating of the master plan was a big one. This one is, what, some of the things that Chris has targeted are, some of them are a little more tactical, like the change in polling hours.
Yeah.
Question, I mean, that's clearly something that's gonna be addressed, ongoing with Marston, former USA Springs, of course, the emergency lanes.
Right.
Right. So those are some of the things that he, he flagged.
Do we have, are there any others that come to mind that may wanna add to the list?
I mean, personally, for me, my, my three big things are former USA Springs, but I mean, there's not much we can do proactively, that's more of a reactive, and make the decisions as we can at the right times. Personally, for me, Marston is a big one, and then I think for the entire board, probably the emergency lanes is a big one as well.
Yeah. Do we typically limit to, like, like, three or four hot ones, and then the rest as, as possible, or do we just?
Well, I mean, I think no, right? And I, and I think some years, the board's done a better job of doing this than others. I can go back and try to dig up the list from last year and the year before. I think they were a little ambitious, right? And I think it, personally, I think if a board can pick, like, two or three things that are really important and focus on that, that's, that's a good thing.
Right.
Like, I, I know in the, like, way past, there were things like, you know, bridges in town. Were all of our bridges safe, and what needed-
Right.
-to be done there, whether it was through the town or working with the state, right? So, I mean, but that, like I said, I can go get that list from last year or the year before. My preference would be to let's, let's pick a few things that we can actually act on.
Right.
I don't know if you guys, what, what you guys think.
Are we talking about, like, different policies, too, or is it, I mean, these are, I mean, I understand, we're talking about emergency, but are there certain, like, policies that we can talk about being changed, or?
Exactly. Yeah, I, anything-
Things that we think that we need to adjust or redo because of the times.
Exactly.
It's like, one of my suggestions was why, and also people aren't gonna like me making this comment, but I'll make it anyways, you know, is, you know, we used to have a fee to use our recycling center, and the fact that the recycling is not, you know, we're not making any money on that place at all. It's actually costing money to run our recycling center.
Yep.
And most towns have a fee, they charge the residents for use of the recycling center. And my question is, why don't we have a fee to help offset that cost?
Well, we have fees.
Well, we have fees for certain things, but like, a general use, like-
Oh, okay.
Before, you had, like, one dollar, you got your sticker, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, this is, might be a real open, I mean, conversation where we should have more, all board, but I'm just-
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, that would help offset the revenue cost of, you know, especially with the needs of repairs coming to that building that we're talking about, the fact of recycling nowadays, the money that we're not, you know, there is not money to be made. It's costing-
Right.
You know, money to recycle. You know, it's good for the environment, and, you know, it's earthbound, I appreciate all this, but it's costing the town. Every year, it's gonna get costly and more costly. So we should, I think, of some way to try to, you know, offset that cost.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good thing to, to look at, right? Certainly with new Public Works Director.
Sure.
It's an opportunity to do that.
But there's projects that things that they wanna do down there, which they need extra money for, which we'd have to budget into it, but, you know, if we always had, you know, a small stipend or fee, or whatever you wanna say it, you know, that could help offset some of those general maintenance costs for that building that's being old, you know, 'cause I know, we did have that conversation a while back about, you know, redoing it, but I don't think anybody wants to put up that dollar amount to, to fix it, you know, the whole new place, but-
Yep.
It's just a way to cover some of the costs, if you think you have a, you know, a thousand cars, and it's $10, it's an extra, you know, $10,000 could go towards that building maintenance building stuff, or if it was $20 per household, or whatever, that could be an extra 20. I mean, it's just a way to, to offset some of the costs on the money-wise, where most towns, and I bring this up, 'cause most towns have a fee to use the dump. I mean, the, it's not a free service.
Yep.
You know, and we always offered it pretty much as a bonus to free, but it's something to consider for the future, where, you know, it's, I mean, if that building goes up, that raises people's taxes, too, with all the, you know, it's just a way to try to offset. That's what I was just thinking about it, so.
Right.
You know what I might recommend, Tony, since there's only three of us here tonight? I might recommend that you kind of reach out to all of the board members and ask them to send you, you know, a couple of what they think should be the priorities.
Yeah.
And then we can build that list, and then kind of discuss it as a full board.
Right.
But, I mean, that's a great example of, now that we have Sean in that role, maybe we'll, we wanna do an assessment up there.
Yeah.
Just to see. You know, and again, there's other little things, too, which we could, I think making that list would be excellent, to send you, so we can actually put it all down and-
Yeah.
Have a real good discussion about different priorities, and how we prioritize what our goals should be for this upcoming year.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I like that idea.
Yep. Action item.
Action item. [laughing]
There you go.
Okay. Anything else on priorities? No? Okay. All right, next up is the Pawtucket State Park Police Detail Contract. So Chris left this for us to sign.
Yeah, Alda is asking for us to appoint, to allow Gunnar to make, you know, to enter into the agreement with the State Park.
With the Parks Department?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Here we go.
Which has historically been what's done.
Right, right. Okay. All right, he's got a proposed motion here, so it looks like we need to take a vote on that.
I'll make a motion that the select board names Chief Gunnar Foss as an agent authorized to sign agreements with the state of New Hampshire in regard to police detail coverage at Pawtucket State Park for the period ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I also gotta talk to Chris, 'cause we had gotten into a cycle of meeting with folks from the park in DE- folks from the park and DES at the beginning of each season and at the end of each season to kind of talk about, you know, how things have been handled, what issues have come up.
Yeah.
One of the things that was of concern was that the State Park doesn't really have an emergency management plan.
Right, and we discussed that before about...
Right.
Sort of...
Exactly, so I just... We need to reach out to Chris and see if we're gonna do that again.
Yeah, I hope we do, because that's... It's too... Given the geography of the park and how distant it is from the police station, the fire department, it is vulnerable to accidents and other...
Well, the fundee access point as well. Like, the bridges aren't necessarily structured to support emergency vehicles going in.
Talking about that wooden arch bridge?
You mean the one you come over the boat... Out of the boat ramp that goes over into the round pond...
When you come in, you know the path that takes out of the fundee parking lot?
Yep.
Those bridges?
Those bridges are updated.
Yeah, but I don't believe...
I mean, they bring a groomer over that, which is gonna be kind of heavy and big.
I think there might be one, but is that one's not.
Right.
Yeah. So it's the discussion with them, what's the emergency evacuation plan?
I'm writing that down. Okay. Yep, you signed it, good. Alright, next item, lawsuit regarding chemical trespass ordinance. So basically, the town has been served with papers. We are being sued with regards to the chemical trespass ordinance, and we are... What I can say at this time, that we are working with counsel on our response to that lawsuit.
How's who rock the lawsuit? I understand you don't want to talk about it.
I don't, yeah. I don't have all the details on it yet, so I can't say for certain.
Can you give it off the courthouse? The factual lawsuit, it must have been on the courts, is that correct?
I would expect, yeah.
Yes, you can probably look it up.
Yeah, yeah, if it's... I mean, if it's been filed, it's been served, so I assume it's public record, so...
They didn't tell you who?
No, again, Chris is on vacation, so I haven't been able to get my... Our usual briefing from him.
Or what it's about? Is it about the fact of it?
I don't know. That I don't know.
Something to do with... Dumb, you don't know?
I...
Do you know if there's somebody we can ask? Can we call the town attorney, or can we call somebody who knows something about it?
Again, I don't know. I don't have all the details myself.
We can get it from the court.
Yeah.
But assume...
Yeah.
It's a little case, I assume.
Right, right, so...
So the Rockingham District Court should know.
The county courthouse?
County courthouse.
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah. Alright, we've already done our appointments, so that is done for. Any other action items for...
Well, I think we should come up with a lot for Tyler and Ben. Since they're not here, we should come up with a list.
Yeah.
I like that idea. Snooze-a-loose.
Can I ask them? How's the road survey going? Is that moving right along?
I know it started.
Yeah.
Beyond that.
As far as I heard, that they did the road... Yeah, North River. They have that area.
Maybe there's a list on the town website of when at least a tentative schedule.
I think the other one...
Yeah, I mean...
On the one for North River and the surrounding.
Yeah, that list is gonna be, you know... Yeah, it's gonna be... Evolutionary is not the right word, but...
It's living document.
Living document, thank you. So I would encourage people to keep looking at that, because a lot of it's gonna be dependent on what's going on, right? So it may be Chris and Sean getting together, you know, on a Friday and say, "Okay, we're gonna try this next week," right? Just, it's gonna depend on weather, it's gonna depend on what other things the town crew has to do, so... But they will post it there, so people just need to keep going out and checking it.
Of course, other priorities play into that, too. If there's a washout, or a fallen tree, or something that, you know, that the road crew needs to focus on, then the road assessment will wait until they...
Yeah, actually, one other question related to that, it was just, they're assessing the roads for what they need and that sort of thing, as well as compliance with whatever category of roads, just basic or something. But are they also checking for the emergency... Are they looking at the emergency access status at this point? Or is that something that'll come later?
No, no, they're looking at the roads for the potential pain points, right? Boulders poking out, trees that are too close, branches hanging too low, you know, too narrow for the plow, things like that. That's... Because when we... At our last meeting, we were discussing potential criteria, right, for the private and the classics roads, and what the board decided was, let's get a look at what kind of shape these roads are in currently before we try to tackle the question of construction standards, right? So it's just a very general survey.
Survey.
Yeah. But I don't think they're doing the tape measure thing, or they're not out there with scopes and levels. Yeah, it's very cursory, yeah.
Quick question, if somebody blocks an emergency lane, is that of concern to the selectmen?
You know where you're going with this question. And that's a discussion about what you're gonna hear in court over what you're gonna go for, the planning. I mean, the... From the zoning board the other night, about the emergency lane, whether that road... I mean, that road's not maintained by the town. It's not done anything by the town.
No, but it is a town-designated emergency lane.
Alright, we're not gonna get into this... Again, I just don't think we should go into this discussion.
Well, you should have a policy about emergency lanes. Are people allowed to block them if they want?
Well, under the RSA, if an emergency lane is blocked or subject to gates and bars, which is the official term for, you know, being off-limits to the public, then it legally doesn't qualify to be an emergency lane anymore.
Right, well, it was one person that blocked it, though, so it was... Once again, it wasn't a private road, it was a blocked emergency lane. It stays blocked right now by one person. So it threatens the health and safety of the people in that community, so it seems to me it would be a concern.
Yeah, it's... I mean, I don't know all the details of the situation, so I don't want to get into a deep discussion about it.
Maybe that could be part of the policy as we proceed and develop options, and it could be part of the...
Yeah, and as much as the RSA would come into play for a situation like that, yeah. But not knowing all the details, I don't... I don't want to explore that topic, not knowing.
So if there's an emergency in there in the next few weeks, then the town will be liable, I think, for that block, that emergency lane being blocked.
Yeah, we'll discuss it with Chris when he gets back and see what the status of that is. Okay, well, that...
Lightning fast through the agenda, Tony.
Yes, yes, that pretty much rounds out the agenda tonight. I don't believe we have anything for non-public.
No.
No? So I will...
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Unless you had anything else?
Did you have anything, Don? Sorry.
Nothing that's... Can't wait for another day.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.